Spinning.
It's spinning.
The blue spinner.
Preparing to spin more.
Can you make it, Tony?
Yep, we're down.
He didn't say it.
I didn't say it. No, no, no.
He was thinking it.
I'll say the pledge allegiance, you're taking a knee.
Okay, now we're live.
All right, I'm gonna give the solicitor's.
Oh, no, wait a minute, we gotta get this.
Presumably. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, it's 7:00 PM. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We're called order this meeting of the town council. The first item of business is the council sitting as the board of license commissioners is to undertake a remonstrance hearing. The remonstrance hearing's purpose is to hear from any remonstrant who has an issue or concern with the proposed licensing. Is there any remonstrant who wishes to speak with respect to the decision for the request before us, which is to transfer the license from Simmons Cafe and Marketplace LLC to F.A. Simmons LLC? Yes, sir.
Good evening, members of the council. Hi, I'm Eric Chappell. I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, F.A. Simmons LLC, which is Rhode Island LLC. My client recently bought the premises and the business and is requesting a transfer of the BV Limited liquor license as well as the holiday sales license.
Any questions on the council?
No expansion or use. It's basically the same thing all over again?
Same thing all over again. I think they're gonna probably rebrand something in the fall and do some upgrades and things, but no change in the liquor license, no draft system, no change whatsoever.
I would solicit then a motion to approve subject to satisfying state and local requirements.
Go move.
Sorry.
It's a public hearing, you need to ask if anybody wants to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on the issue?
Okay, before you vote, can we make it clear that was for the transfer and for issuing the victualling and holiday sales as applied?
Thank you. I would seek a motion to approve the request, which is to transfer the license and to obtain a victualling and holiday sales license. Is there... Who would make that motion?
I would move that again.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time.
Are there any announcements? Next item of business is the approval of the minutes of May 18th.
Motion, approve the town council minutes of May 18th, 2023, unless anybody wants any comments or questions on it.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next are the department head reports. We have reports from the building zoning official and from the town administrator.
Motion to place both on file.
Second.
Discussion.
I have one to pull out.
Go ahead.
Tony Texara's manager, local solar, Tony?
Yes.
Funds were proposed at the town financial, uh, town finance meeting, but an agreement will have to be drafted between the school department and the town council. Could you tell me? Explain that one to me.
In order for them to receive the funds, there would need to be requests for those funds.
So it's just the funds movement?
Yes.
There's a reimbursement issue with the Department of Education, so we're not sure if we can just give them a check and say, here you go, or do we have to? Can we pay for it? It's just, it's just a paperwork thing.
So I'm aware of the reimbursements from RIDE having been on there.
There's.
Since 2014 and done many projects over there.
There'll be a.
I think it, if I have my own opinion on it, from doing many projects with a school committee since 2014, the chair in 2018, you know, we hardened the entrance over there. We got a lot of reimbursements and, you know, we put air conditioning in the gym and whatnot. I think all we need to do is, I don't think we need to give them $180, whatever it is, $1,000, and put it in their capital fund. I don't think we need to make any arrangement. When they're ready, when the project gets going, let them submit their invoices to us and they can, and we can give them the money out of that pot. I mean, these are high-functioning professionals, you know, that can handle these projects. You know, I don't think there's any need for any agreement. That's my personal opinion.
What account would those funds go into if it's gonna be held by the town?
If I might, counselor, there's an item on the agenda, "Old Business Two," which is this issue. And in order to make sure we get all the comments, including how we might take this, undertake this action, Counselor McHugh's issue was with, if I understand it correctly, with the wording of the administrator's comment, and that point's well taken. Let's move forward, and we can move, when we get to "Old Business Two," we can undertake these manners in which we might satisfy the request. If that's.
Sounds good. That's great. I'll wait, sure.
Thanks. The motion then is to place these two on file. Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item then is in fact "Old Business One," which is the impact of votes taken at last week's financial town meeting. My purpose in putting this on the agenda is just to be sure that we understand there were three votes taken at the meeting which have a financial impact. One of them was to order a tax. That was taken at the end. That limits the amount of tax that can be raised to $13,538,000. During the meeting, two amendments were made to the budget committee's recommendation. The schools' requested amount was fully funded and what has just been discussed, the capital fund was increased by $185,000. So what I've given you is a revised recapitulation page after the financial town meeting. And basically what it does, it has no standing as far as a vote. The votes are what they are at the meeting, but it does have standing with respect to how we intend to carry out the direction of the people. And what we specifically are going to need to do is to raise more money, because that's the top line, the expense budget. So we need revenues to match that. And the way we do it is a combination of property taxes and rely on the general fund. And just to be clear, when we call it general fund appropriation, it isn't as if we reach into the general fund and take out that amount of money and set it on the table and say, there, we've got money to spend. It constitutes the source from which any excess beyond taxes, property tax, delinquent taxes, administrative fees, all that sort of thing flowing in, anything more than that is taken from the general fund. So the result of that is to change that figure from what it was in the budget committee report, which was a million one. That figure that we are going to rely on the general fund for, I'm sorry, a million four. We're gonna rely on that for a million four. Excuse me. So, just to be clear, that's where we're going with this. I don't think there's a problem with it. It's not fiscally irresponsible, but it's different from what we had on the recapitulation page. Any questions? Okay. Yes.
Andy Ryan, 40, Pedro Gargano. I have a question about votes, but it wasn't those particular items. I was curious, I was confused at the meeting. I was just hoping for a little clarification. So the moderator moved to accept the housing trust vote, but then he changed the wording. He said there was a mistake, there was something left out. We voted, and I don't understand how that happened. I'm just curious, I wasn't, it happened so fast. I wasn't crystal clear on the ramifications of why or anything. And so since I saw this on the agenda, I thought it'd be a good time, maybe we could understand that.
That's a fair question. I'm not prepared to answer.
I can explain. Proofreading of the warrant and the budget committee report happened while I was home on medical. I did proofread that section correctly, but when I got back, I questioned myself and thought I did it wrong. So hence, there's a few words that were in the town meeting the prior year that said that any expenditure of the housing trust needed to be approved by the town council first. I incorrectly told the moderator that I left those out, and that's why he made that announcement, because it was in the warrant and not in the budget committee report. We voted it that way, and unfortunately, that's not what the intention of the council was. They did not want those words in there. But because of my absence and coming back, and I made the mistake. It's my fault.
So no, I was, I mean, I almost objected when he made that motion. It just happened so quickly, because it was, I remember last year amending that.
Well, last year, they put those, they discussed putting those words in, and they actually removed them, correct? Last year?
Yeah, yeah, there was amendment, it was in, and it was amendment to remove them.
Yes.
But I'm wondering if there could be a, if y'all could undertake some type of policy or something that would allow us as voters to actually have accurate text when we show up to the meetings? Because.
You would have. I'm explaining that that was 100% my mistake.
Something can't be changed unless there's actually an amendment to vote on that change in a discussion, because he just changed it. And I realize the moderator has a lot of authority to run the meeting, how he wants to run it and stuff, but he just changed what was written without a discussion or really explanation of anything. And you can see this happening with other, it could happen in the future with other items. I'm just thinking if there was a way to prevent that sort of quick thing from happening or something, people would be a little more prepared.
I think he explained it, but not giving you enough time to absorb it.
Yeah.
It was, like I said, 100% my error. It should not have gone in there. And he did it because I said it was correct in the warrant, and that's the document that governs town meeting. The budget committee report is supposed to mirror that, and in this case, it had not mirrored that. So I, we do the best that we can, and sometimes we make a mistake, and I made a mistake, I own up to it. And the worst that happens is when the housing trust needs to have invoices paid this time for this fiscal year. They'll just have to go through the council's billing process. And I apologize for that, but that's what's gonna happen. Okay?
Thank you. Any other questions?
Do you want a motion to place that on file? Or do you just don't need a motion at all?
I don't need a motion. I just wanted to review what happened at the meeting and what its impact is on the way we spend money during the year.
So just for clarification, if we don't get into an agreement with the school that that money's gonna be allotted to them, what fund are we gonna put it in on the?
I'm one, I'm one item away from that question. I'm one item away from.
I have a question too, please.
Yes.
So tonight, is there gonna be a vote where the council says they approve or disapprove of the spending of that, what was it, $187,000?
$185,000, yes, there is, Ms. Ellen. It is the very next item on our agenda.
Great.
Next item on for bits.
Any other questions regarding this item? Mr. Locke is worried that I'm not going to get to his item. We are at his item now. Mr. Locke has submitted a letter to us saying, "I would like to add an agenda item for the June 1st meeting to consider approving capital expenditures to the solar project for the school." Carry on the solar project for the school. In my opinion, I'll say this. We have in the capital fund right now more than $185,000 waiting for expenditure. It is within our purview to expend funds from the capital fund, because you've given us the authority each time you make additional allocations to the general, to the capital fund. We do not need to wait, in my opinion, until fiscal '24 to begin spending what was authorized at the meeting last week. We could begin spending it because it comes from the capital fund. If it came from a fund that isn't in existence until fiscal '24 begins, we could not. But I would exhort my fellow counselors that we have the opportunity to respond to what is obviously the will of the people, that we begin this project and to do so using this year's money to begin the process. And if we were, which I don't think we will, if we were to expend all of it in the next month, all $185,000, we have more than $185,000 in our capital fund. And then on July 1st, our capital fund, because of the action of the people, would be increased not only by the amount we requested, but by an additional $185,000. The only thing that I think we have to be careful about has been alluded to, and that is the fact that we need to be sure that anything we do does not jeopardize our ability to be reimbursed by the Department of Education. So if, for example, the Department of Education said, "We need to see that the expenditures were incurred by the school department," then we would, we would need to make that condition, that we would give the school department an increment of funding that they requested in order to do a particular payment. And then we continue to do that, up to $185,000. That's my thought. I'm ready to hear from any other opinion. I believe we should support this. I believe we should support it now. I believe we should use this year's money to begin it. And my only condition on it is that we not, not transgress any Department of Education rule with respect to whose money is being spent. To be explicit, if it's important to the DOE that it is the school department money that's spent, then I would say we ask them to invoice us or some fashion like that, where we can give the money to them for that purpose.
I'll move the $185,000 to take out of this year's capital fund to be moved, with the caveats you've mentioned about making sure the process doesn't run afoul of DOE's rules.
Is there a second to that?
Second.
Mr. McHugh?
Yeah, I don't think there's any worry about being reimbursed by RIDE. I think John McNamie is a professional, has done this for many years, and he's got this down to a T. So he's not gonna leave anything to chance here. That's been my experience since 2014 with him on many projects. I do, I don't think that we should give $185,000 all at once. I think that the best way to go is when the project starts, it hasn't even started yet. When it starts, that they invoice us, and we give them money for their invoices.
That is consistent with the motion. Yes, I agree. Anyone else? Are you ready to vote on that motion? Did we, did we apply any contingency subject to, or do we need to do that?
Well, that's up to you.
Yeah, it was, it was subject to the DOE's make sure it follows through with DOE's process. That was what I mean. However, the funding, however, the funding transfers, it's not to impede the reimbursement from DOE.
Consistent with RIDE. Make it consistent with RIDE's requirement. So the expenditure then, to summarize the motion, it is to begin expending the $185,000 approved at this year's financial town meeting immediately contingent upon the school department coming forward with requests for reimbursement, or requests for payment. Does that satisfy your question, Ellen?
My question? Does it satisfy Mr. Locke and the school? Does that seem consistent with what you needed?
I couldn't possibly be happier or more supportive of the six sentences that I just heard.
Oh, awesome.
And I wanna thank everybody on the town council and everybody else in town for all the work. What they just did is the ideal solution. Thank you so much.
Any further? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Thanks. The next item is to discuss end-of-year department head evaluations, including setting a date for a meeting. Next week, on Tuesday, we are proposing that the council meet with the town's department heads for end-of-year evaluation and merit pay approval. The proposal from the administrator is that it begin at 4:00 PM and go in, I think, did you have 20-minute intervals?
About half hour.
Half-hour intervals?
Yes.
So it would take us until?
About 6:00.
6:30.
I'm gonna have to leave at quarter to 6:00. I got another meeting I have to be at at 6:00.
All right. Are we able to bring together a quorum of the council for that period?
June 6th? June 6th?
Yes. June 6th, Tuesday, 4th. Very good. I don't need a motion, we'll simply.
Where are you meeting?
Where are we meeting? We're meeting in the, in the town council chambers. Yeah? You don't have any painting going on, do you?
No.
Okay.
It'll be a trial run.
Would you like that in, for the record, in a motion?
I don't need for it to be in a motion.
Okay. You just wanna, thank you. All right. The next item then is a request from the Ag Trust to use the town's credit card to make purchases where payment by check is not allowed.
I'll move that.
Second.
Discussion. All in.
The only thing I want to clarify is how would they reimburse them? I'm assuming they're gonna reimburse them Ag Trust funds for everything they buy. I just want.
That's was in what I.
In there.
Yeah, I read that. I just didn't seem to say that.
I think they got enough funds.
Yeah, no, they, they fully intend on.
No, and I know they do. I just being stickler about making sure we get it back, that's all. It's in, it's in.
In here.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries, 4, 5, 0. A request from the administrator to advertise for the position of Director of Public Works.
Motion to advertise for Public Works Director.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thanks. A letter received from Martina Halsey asking if the town solicitor advised the CRMC relative to revolution wind as it may relate to any conflict of interest with this serving as the town's solicitor.
Well, this issue comes up on a regular basis, and the plain fact of the matter is, is I represent the Coastal Resources Management Council. And there's been a request that I get an opinion, an advisory opinion from the Ethics Commission. The question is, is whether or not that opinion should come from the Ethics Commission. I'll explain why in a second. Or if that should come from the disciplinary council as an advisory panel on matters of conflicts for lawyers. That's not governed by the Rhode Island Court of Ethics. That's governed by the Court of Professional Responsibility that all lawyers that are members of the bar have to adhere to here in Rhode Island and around the country, too. So, you know, I've been doing a deep dive on this. And the question is, is whether or not I'm benefiting financially. That's the Court of Ethics question. There'd be an argument if I actually represented these developers of these offshore wind projects, which I don't. So then the question becomes whether or not the fact that I represent a regulatory agency at the state level and a municipal corporation, the town of Little Compton, whether or not that's inherently a conflict. That's what I'm trying to determine. Because of the legal issues involved, it's taken a bit longer on this. This letter assumes that there is a conflict. I don't think so. And, but I want the council to know, and people that are here and watching, that I take these issues very seriously, because it's a question of whether or not my ethics are appropriate here. I think they are. It's something that I discussed with you before I was appointed. So it's not, not a new issue. And I'm hoping that these bodies can get back as soon as possible to see whether or not I'm right on this. So I anticipate that you're gonna get more letters. This isn't the first one from this writer. I suspect it won't be the last. It's on the same issue. And as soon as the issues are sorted through, we'll go from there. One thing I won't do, however, is just quickly dash off letters on this. I take this very seriously. And I wanna make sure that both the Ethics Commission and the disciplinary council, their advisory panel, have all of the facts on this. I understand from both bodies that lawyers have been making inquiries on it. So I wanna make sure that my side of the story gets through. That's where it stands.
So when we interviewed all the solicitors to hire a solicitor, I did ask that question, if there was a conflict of interest before we hired Tony. And he gave me the same responses he just gave now. So I think we have to wait for the Ethics Commission or the disciplinary board to make a ruling on that. And however that comes out, then we'll have to deal with it.
Correct. And you know, one thing I did say during the process is I already represent another coastal community in the state of Rhode Island, the town of Warren. There have been no conflicts all of the time that I've been the lawyer for CRMC and the solicitor for the town of Warren. So this isn't a new issue for me.
Motion, place the letter on file.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. The next item of business is a request from Megan Gonzalez and Jenna Magnuski, co-presidents of Love Winds Coastal, asking the council to consider adopting a proclamation recognizing Pride Month and to raise awareness of the LGBTQ+ community. Ladies, would you like to speak?
My name is Jenna Magnuski. I am here today to advocate for an important declaration that will celebrate diversity, promote inclusivity, and uplift the LGBTQ+ community in our town. I urge you to proclaim the month of June as Pride Month and to raise the pride flag as a symbol of our unwavering support. Pride Month signifies the struggles, injustices, and joys of being LGBTQ+. Shared amongst LGBTQ+ people, their allies, and all of their fellow Americans. Love Winds Coastal asks you to join us by proclaiming June as Pride Month officially. Some may say that Pride Month and the pride flag are political, but these claims are moves to divide us. LGBTQ+ people and their allies come from all political backgrounds. Rather, our request tonight are a recognition of the fundamental human rights and dignity of all individuals. Your approval tonight would be an affirmation that every person, regardless of their sexual orientation or their gender identity, deserves equal treatment, opportunities, and respect. That we are a community that values compassion, understanding, and justice. Raising the pride flag is a powerful and visible way to showcase our town's dedication to inclusivity. It is a symbol of solidarity that lets everyone know they're welcome, respected, and valued here. Raising the pride flag says that discrimination, prejudice, and hate have no place in our community. That those who live, work, and play in Little Compton can be who they are and love who they love. The impact of your vote here tonight goes far beyond a mere symbol. The presence of supportive symbols positively impacts The presence of supportive symbols positively impacts the mental health of LGBTQ+ people. For youth, it can actually save lives. The Trevor Project found that community attitudes significantly reduce the negative mental health effects and that just one supportive adult reduces the risk of suicide by 40%. Raising the Pride flag shows these community members that they are not alone and that this community stands firmly beside them. I understand that this decision may not be without its challenges, both legal and social. Legally, in the past, this council expressed concerns about the shirtless case at the Supreme Court. However, the court's decision stated that, quote, "Boston could have easily done more to make it clear it wished to speak for itself by raising flags." The American Civil Liberties Union notes a variety of cities and towns that have adopted exactly that tactic. They also describe municipal and school bans of pride flags or the restriction of flags overall as part of the overall wave of anti-LGBTQ+ bills and laws across the United States. Mr. Marshon's decision to rescind the proposed flag ordinance last year saved this community from being a part of that movement. Tonight, we have the opportunity to do the exact opposite. You counselors can stand boldly behind what your hearts know to be true, that each person has dignity and worth. While change can be met with resistance, you have the opportunity for deep leadership in our community through these challenges, helping Little Compton to grow and evolve as a community. By taking this step, you encourage dialogue, foster understanding, and promote empathy. You give us all an opportunity to educate and bridge divides to create a stronger and more cohesive community. I hope that you vote tonight to embrace inclusivity, equality, and the well-being of all of our residents. Little Comptoners have taken these stands throughout its history, with its residents actively and visibly working for the abolition of slavery, women's rights, labor rights, and more. By taking this decisive action, we continue the town's tradition of setting, setting an example for neighboring communities and inspiring positive change far beyond its borders. Let's move forward together. Thank you.
Anything further? Comments? Would you like me to lead off with what I've done with the?
Proclamation.
Proclamation?
Yes, sir.
The wording that, that was offered, I attempted to craft it into a proclamation that is representative of the town. The proclamation that I did, this is my work. I don't believe my fellow counselors until this evening have had the opportunity to look at this. I took the proclamation to say as follows. Whereas the town of Little Compton acknowledges the dignity and worth of each person and is therefore committed to supporting those attributes for those in our community who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and other identities LGBTQ+. And whereas observing Pride Month seeks to increase awareness and provide support to the LGBTQ+ community through conversation and connection among the population of the town. And whereas the governments of the United States of America and the state of Rhode Island each recognize and proclaim June as Pride Month annually, now therefore let it be resolved that the town council of the town of Little Compton hereby proclaims the month of June 2023 as LGBTQ+ Pride Month. That would be my proposed resolution.
Motion to approve proclamation as written.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the proclamation. Is there further discussion?
Sounds great.
About time.
About time.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you for your encouragement also. I personally am not able to be there on Saturday, but I know that there are counselors who will be. And I appreciate your asking that we be there. I would be otherwise if I weren't out of town.
As usual, I'll be there.
Awesome. Thank you.
The next item of business is the Coastal Resources Management Council public notice for CRMC filed 2022-03-08-0 for a federal consistency review of South Coast Wind and New England Wind Project. Comments must be received by CRMC on or before July 23rd.
Motion to place on file.
Second.
Discussion on that. All in favor?
The only, yeah.
Oh, go ahead.
South Coast Wind is the company that wants to run the cable up the river. I think everybody's come to the conclusion. I was at a coastal resources meeting for several hours when the same procedure came up for Revolution Wind. And I would say 80% of the people were against Revolution Wind putting windmills up, but Coastal Resources approved it. I think they're gonna approve the turbines for this one also. But this is the one that runs the cable up the river. And I, and many of the fishermen in Secana, have a problem with that because we don't know whether the cable's gonna have electromagnetic currents that are gonna disturb any sea life. And when the dredging for the cables go in, there's gonna be mud plumes. And when those mud plumes rise off the surface floor and gets ingested by lobsters and crabs and finfish, clogs their gills up and they die. And there's a situation out on Block Island where there's supposed to be 1,500 feet from any vessel that's laying a cable. And some of the dragger guys out there were told they had to stay a mile and a half away. So if that comes to fruition in the Secana River and you have to stay a mile and a half away from the boat putting the cable in, some places the river's not even a mile and a half wide. So are we not gonna be allowed to go out of the harbor? Are we not gonna be allowed to go fishing? So if you don't feel like you want that cable going, or if you do, please write to Coastal Resources and let them, your ideas known.
Thank you.
That's not even the stuff that's gonna be driven up by the hydroplow, what toxic stuff has settled and been blown up.
May I suggest that you and I work together and see if there's something we want to put forward before July 23rd? We can bring it to the council at a subsequent meeting and, and see if.
I was gonna send them my thoughts on it. But the town can send their resolution that we didn't want the cable going up here and we thought an appropriate place would be Route 88 because South Coast Wind isn't gonna bring in any electricity in Rhode Island. It's all gonna go to Massachusetts. So I'll work with you on that.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor of the? Oh, sorry. Yeah.
I'm wondering if you're aware of other electrical cables that run across through water to other areas of land, maybe your land-generated power running to islands?
Well, I know the cable that went on Block Island came up out of the sand. I know that. That was a horrible situation that Rhode, that Block Island had to pay for.
They've been running cables through water to islands for, for millennia.
Well, then you have your aspect on it and I have mine. Are you a fisherman? Are you gonna be harmed by it?
Also, when you make statements, you might want to engage scientists about what would happen if there were dredging, because dredging happens a lot. And dredging's pretty common for ship channels or other things. They're constantly dredging the ship channels. They're constantly doing work. And, and these things.
They dredge ship channels, they remove the dredge spoils.
Yes. And, but sometimes they dredge and don't remove the dredge spoils when they're making, when, and they make spoil islands. But you have resources available to you. You could ask scientists to, to come and, and brief you on this. But, but this idea that somehow they're gonna get some kind of electromagnetic problems with the water is just kind of ludicrous.
It's not ludicrous because I have paperwork that says that happens.
We run power across water, under water, to land all the time. It's just, for some reason, it's because it's generated with wind turbines that now it's gonna be an issue instead of it generating with coal power plants or nuclear or something else on land moving it to, you know, if you were gonna power an island, it wouldn't be such a big deal, I don't think. But they're powering land.
Are you gonna lose income from anything going up the river?
Again, I think you're getting.
Are you gonna lose income from anything going up the river?
No, I'm not.
Okay, then. I am. Go ahead, Polly.
Yes? If you are gonna lose income from this, then should you recuse yourself?
Sure, I'll recuse myself from the vote.
Can you have that noted, Carol?
Mr. Marsh? Anything further?
Yes.
Yeah, Jennifer McDowell, Little Compton. I was just, I have children and grandchildren, as I'm sure you do. And I think the fact that this energy is going Massachusetts or Rhode Island or North Carolina is irrelevant when it comes to climate change. That trying to reduce the amount of fossil, energy produced by fossil fuels is the issue here. And we have to look at a bigger picture than just who's directly benefiting from it. And I understand for the local fishing industry, that's a very hard move to swallow. And I don't have personal think, wherever this happens, climate change is gonna affect the local fishing industries everywhere. I'm guessing you're already seeing that, that things are moving. And, and so I think the bigger picture is how we're addressing climate change for the world as a whole, our children as a whole.
Every meeting I've been to, they've discussed decommissioning these turbines after 15 years. That's it. No more turbines. So if it's not gonna be a long-term solution, why are we doing it?
Until we find something else better.
Well, why don't we look for something else before we destroy the ocean? So I've recused myself.
I don't think, we're not voting on this, are we? Are we sending this on file?
We're just placing this on file right now. That's all that's going on. I don't think you have to.
So there's no vote here. There's no, it's just everyone's opinion.
Yep.
Right? And we know opinions aren't facts. So do we have more opinions?
I, can I give you an opinion?
Let's hear another one. Let's hear another. Is this pro or anti?
So, actually, it's the opposite. It's nihilism.
It's in the middle?
I spend all day outside in the mud, or when it rains, it's mud. And I also listen to actual scientists in my ears all day. Now, El Nino is supposed to start this September, October. That warms the whole globe by .1 degree. Okay? And we're going right now at solar minimum. The sun right now is putting out the least amount of energy in a seven-year cycle. This is as cold as it gets. We had the warmest February, the warmest March, the warmest April. All of the math that the premier scientists do say that this is not stoppable. I don't think the wind turbines are gonna do anything. I, I've been planting trees in this town for 25 years. We are never gonna fix enough water because we are in love with fossil fuels. It's over. I, Gary, 70 feet above sea level is my house. Okay? They say by 2040, that's the beach. You wanna keep your boat across the beach from my house, that's cool. But there is nothing left that we can do. And we can sit here and argue about it, take aside. I don't like this guy because he wants this. I don't like this lady because she wants that. It's scoreboard. It's over. So enjoy it. I, I cannot think of a way around this. Not with, not by planting trees. There, there's no, there's no way out. So we should just enjoy our time together. We live in a beautiful spot. We could all be friends, but there's not a single thing we can do about it. If we planted, we have enough square acres in Little Compton to plant enough trees to sink all the carbon used in the state of Rhode Island still would not make a difference. It would not move the needle. So that's what I think about all day. I listen to the, again, the newest book, the newest papers. They're all in my ear for eight hours a day. There's no way out. So let's just enjoy our time together. We're gonna have a couple of parties this month. Pride Month. All right? I'll see you there, Gary. We're gonna have.
Yep.
Okay?
Very good. Motion's been made and seconded, sir, to place this on file.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Counselor Morgen.
Is he left?
Okay. So the vote then is three in favor and one abstention.
Well, one recusal, Bob.
One recusal.
Are you recusing or abstaining? Take your pick.
Take your pick. You said both. Which one do you want?
Well, I'll abstain from the vote.
That way you don't have to fill the form out.
Thanks. The next item of business is the Tiverton Town Council's request to the General Assembly to restore general revenue sharing.
Motion to place that on file.
I think we should support this, Bob.
I'll second the motion to put it on file.
Go ahead. Counselor Metros.
Well, won't this be bringing some money back into the town, hopefully? General revenue sharing?
To be. It's my opinion that the opinion of Little Compton with respect to the restoration of revenue sharing is probably not significant since we don't get very much. But I'm happy to hear that you think otherwise.
So if you want to support it, I'll pull it, I'll pull my motion back.
Yeah, I'd like to support it because the town council respectfully requests the respective city and town councils of Rhode Island joining our request to have the General Assembly restore general revenue in the upcoming fiscal year 2024.
I withdraw my motion, Carol. And I think, I think Patrick seconded it.
I'll look for my, my second.
I'd like to support this motion. And send it.
Would you propose a companion motion from the town of Little Compton? Yes. The motion then is to.
I'll second it.
Is to create a, a similar motion from the town of Little Compton regarding restoration of general revenue sharing. And a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next item is the consent file.
Motion is sent to consent, consent. Motion to place the consent calendar on file unless someone wants to pull something and talk about it.
I'm gonna pull something.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, two. It's a copy and email sent to the Beach Commission from Tucker Cronin, copied the council, the communication received by the Beach Commission section. This was sent from a family that goes to Wilbur School in the out-of-district tuition program at Wilbur School. And they're asking to go to South Shore Beach. And I support that. There's eight families now currently in school. They have a little girl that's made friends. They've made friends here. They can't get into South Shore Beach after 4:00 since the pandemic. They closed the beach to non-residents after 4:00. I think that we should let these folks have a sticker, get into the beach after 4:00. So I would recommend highly that the Beach Commission take this.
I'll, I'll make a motion that Counselor McHugh contacts the Beach Commission to discuss this. See what they come back with, since we don't have any purview over the beach.
I appreciate that. Do we need to second that?
I'll second that motion. The motion then is made and seconded that Counselor McHugh speaks with the Beach Commission regarding his concern that he's just eloquently expressed here. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
On file, consent number one.
And, thank you. Is there then a vote on placing consent one on file? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Next is the payment of bills.
Motion to pay the bills is written. Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the council, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you for your participation.